Did you hear anything from Melanie in the past few days? Okay, well, I'll reach out then. Okay, welcome everyone to the February second meeting of the Ocean Beach Planning Board. Yeah, we just keep going. All right. So I know, oh, here's Nicole. I know it's a pretty short agenda tonight, but we do have, you know, a project to review, which I'm excited about. It feels like it's been a while since we reviewed a project and you know, that is our main purpose here. So that's good. So do I have any changes to the agenda then before we get started? Do I have an emotion to approve and accept the agenda? Thanks Newman.
I read it. I'll second it.
Thanks Craig. Do I have any objections? Over moving forward with tonight's agenda. Okay, wonderful. I sorry, let me change my view here for a second so I can see you all at once. Okay, wonderful. Okay, second, the minutes. Do, do I have anyone seeking to change the minutes? Any comments, questions, changes to the minutes?
Just one typo on the, he was referring to Santa Cruz. It was spelled like Tom Cruise.
Santa Cruz.
Tracy must just be talking about old Tom Boyle times.
Change the name of Santa Cruz Avenue to spell it like Tom Cruise.
Yeah, that's important. Okay, cool. So with those changes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Thank you Anthony. Do I have a second? Thanks Jane. Okay, wonderful. Do I have any objections over accepting the minutes? Oh Jane, you're muted. Jane, did you have something else to add to the minutes?
You're muted by the way, and I cannot, I cannot unmute you.
Yeah. No Jane, you're still muted.
There you go. We can hear you now.
We were not at the meeting.
Okay. So you're abstaining. Yeah, okay, wonderful. Thanks Jane. Alright, anyone else? Okay, well, let's roll right into community reports then. I think I saw Teddy come in. Teddy, I'll give you the floor first. And then we will, and then I see Rachel. So although Teddy, Rachel Cota isn't here tonight. And then we also do have a representative from Tara Lawson Rivers office as well, Rebecca Smith. So I'll go Teddy, I'll go Rachel, I'll go Cole Reed, and then we'll go Rebecca. Okay, so Teddy, the floor is yours.
Andrea. Just real quickly, we, I just wanted to kind of remind folks the budget process is underway. Councilmember Campbell put out her budget priorities memo. I don't know if, if all of you have seen that, so I'll, I'll link that to the chat. The IBA report will be released, or has already been released, so I'll link that as well. The mayor will release his proposed budget April fifteenth. And then the Budget Review Committee meetings start the first week of May. So we'll be plenty of time between now and then to engage in the budget process. If any of you have questions about how to do that, feel free to let me know. There's also a CIP Town Hall that I thought might be interesting to this group, just in, in terms of the CIP process that goes alongside that. That Town Hall is on February seventeenth, so I'll link the registration for that, encourage you all to attend. And then obviously, the, the news today is the vendor's ordinance agenda has been released for the Economic Development and Intergovernmental Relations Committee next week, Wednesday. So it's February ninth at two P M. The draft language is on the website. I'll link you all the draft language as well as the staff report. So you can see what will be discussed. And yeah, I encourage you all to, to tune into that meeting. I'll, I'll link the agenda so you can see how to call in to the, to the meeting next week as well. And that's, that's pretty much all I want to highlight. Obviously, a lot going on. So if anyone has questions, feel free to, to let me know.
Yeah. Do we have any update on when the Bermuda Stairs should begin being rebuilt?
I believe the, the design phase is already completed. So I think they're planning for construction. I asked for an update and off the top of my head, I'm not sure if I, if I received one. So I'll, I'll send you some info on that. So we can share it to the, to the rest of the board.
Yeah, perfect. Does anyone else have any questions for Councilmember Campbell's office? You can raise your hand virtually or physically.
I do, Kevin.
Hey Kevin, floor is yours.
I noticed in the vendor draft, it's, it's pretty similar to what was issued in twenty nineteen. However, Newport Avenue was originally on the list of heavily trafficked areas that would prohibit vending. And now it's not. So I'm curious, I would, I would think Campbell had some, I don't know who made that decision to remove Newport from that basically block list. Do you know anything about that?
I don't. I'll have to review it against what the previous version was. I got it late this afternoon as well, so I haven't gone through line by line. But let's connect and see what we can do either before or during the committee next week to get the answer.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Concerns? All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. Good to see you again.
Take care.
Yep, Cole or Rachel, I said the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. A pleasure to be with you all today. My name is Rachel Granitino and I'm with Assemblymember Ward's office. So Assemblymember Ward returned to Sacramento on January third. Where our team in the Capitol is helping to begin our new legislative session. On January thirty first, there was a deadline in the legislature for two-year bills to pass the Assembly. And Assemblymember Ward did get his bill passed on Monday. The bill is AB three eleven, which is our ghost gun bill. It made sure that we closed loophole that was still available to the Del, Del, excuse me, Delmar Fairgrounds to sell ghost guns. The county and city of San Diego had already passed their own measures to stop the sale of ghost guns. And since the fairgrounds are seat lands, they would have been exempt from that. So this bill looked to address that. He also reintroduced AB sixteen forty to establish regional climate networks. It would provide the ability for regions to form networks empowered to convene, receive and apply for funds and prioritize adaptation projects. This bill will be first heard in March. Additionally, Assemblymember Ward has two new roles in the state assembly. He has now been added as a member of, of the Assembly Housing Committee. And he was also named the new Assistant Majority Leader. He looks forward to how he can be of service to advocate for the San Diego community in this new role. Lastly, on January eighteenth, we hosted a virtual town hall with Lieutenant Governor Kuna Lakas. Assemblymember Ward and the Lieutenant Governor addressed a wide variety of topics, including higher education, climate and the California budget. It has now been uploaded to our social media and our website, and I will be sure to put the link in the chat. And as always, if you're having any issues with any state-related agencies, E D D, B M V, A B C, you name your acronym, please feel free to reach out. Our office is always happy to help. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thanks Rachel. Does anyone have any questions? Or, um, my God. Chris Ward's office, Assemblymember Ward's office. Okay, well, thanks. Thanks for your time today, Rachel.
Of course.
Floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I just have three brief updates to share with you all tonight. So first, I'm going to start with Women of the Year nominations. So just yesterday, our office launched a webpage where anyone living within thirty ninth Senate District can offer their input for Woman of the Year. Every March, the California Legislature honors amazing women who've done incredible work in their communities. And this year, we're just trying something completely new and we're trying to gather as much input from the community as possible. I'll share the link with that, not with that webpage in the chat box below. And I just want people just to spread the word on this because the more input that we get, I think the, the better results that we'll end up receiving. Next is the California Mortgage Relief Program. This was launched on Tuesday, January fifth. And this is a first in the nation program that, within the state of California, that will disperse about a billion dollars worth of funds to homeowners who faced financial hardship for the pandemic. The program ultimately had to get approved by the U S Department of Treasury. So this is brand new. And it's just one way that states providing relief to homeowners amidst the pandemic. Not everyone would be eligible to receive this relief, but I'll also share the, the, if, the website information in the chat box below. In case anyone's interested in looking into this, or if they know someone who feel like that they could benefit from it. The last update that I have is with the D M V. This is a very brief update, but last week they did announce that you can now go green and sign up for paperless announcements for your vehicle registration or your driver's license renewal. This is super convenient, takes two minutes to opt into it, and it's just one way that you can avoid getting paperwork lost in the mail. And if you prefer receiving your updates through email, you know how that option. Anyways, that's it for my update tonight, and I'm happy to take any comments or any questions.
Great, thanks Cole. Does anyone have any questions for Senator Atkins' office, state level stuff? So when I, I have to renew my registration soon, can I do, can I opt into the paperless while I'm doing that? In the webpage?
Yeah, it's available right now. I did it last week and it took two minutes. It was very easy.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you Cole. Of course. And of course, our newest, I guess, community liaison Rebecca Smith. She's again, from our new supervisor, County Supervisor. As you may remember, we got shifted out of Nathan Fletcher's and now we're part of Tara Lawson Reed's and a new coastal county supervisor district. So we're really happy to have you. Thanks for showing up.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm super glad to be here tonight. Supervisor Lawson Reamer is really excited about having OB in her new district. And hopefully in the next coming months, I know you were hoping she could come speak. Hopefully, we can set that up. So you can all meet her as well. I just have a quick announcement from our office at the county. So Supervisor Lawson Reamer believes that when we support local food providers and farmers, our climate will improve and our families will have access to healthier food. But one of the region's largest food buyers, the county of San Diego, hasn't been doing enough to buy local. So this lack, last week, the County Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to move forward with a landmark proposal that will invest in local food sources and support San Diego food producers, workers and businesses. County government is one of the largest food buyers in our region. It spends about twenty million dollars to provide ten million meals each year for seniors, foster youth and public hospitals, to name a few. And with this new policy that was championed by Supervisor Lawson Reamer, San Diegans win and we can fight poor nutrition and climate change in the process. I'm going to drop a little bit more information. We have a, a video clip of Supervisor Lawson Reamer. I'll drop it in the chat. And then if you have any further questions about this program, I'm going to put my colleague Amanda Berry's contact information as well as mine in the chat below too. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, again, great, great to meet you. And we look forward to working with our new County Supervisor's office for, you know, whatever it is the county does. Alright, great. Does anyone have any questions for our new County Supervisor's office? Kevin, you're fixing your hair, not raising your hand. Got it. Okay, okay, then we will move on to non-agenda public comment. Mandy Havlick did ask to go first. I asked, I'll be giving everyone two minutes as usual. And I asked that anyone who does want to speak during non-agenda public comment, please raise your virtual hand. I will be looking for virtual hands. Not your physical hand. Okay, great. So Mandy, you're the floor, and then I will go down the list as I see it after that.
Good evening. I want to announce my, sorry, good evening. My name is Mandy. And I want to announce that I'm running for San Diego City Council District Two. I'm a land use advocate, environmental activist, a mother of two and a military spouse. I have fought to keep the coastal height limit and oppose Measure E due to the concern over environmental impacts for the community regarding projected sea level rise and the history of the topography of Midway. I will fight to ensure that the beach and coastal communities remain accessible to all, not just a privileged few. I opposed S B nine and S B ten and the A D U proposition due to the unregulated densification it will bring to communities with no plans for transit, infrastructure and environmental impacts. I have also advocated for the conservation of wetlands through my position with the Safe Amos Canyon Group. We need to see more action and accountability in addressing the climate crisis, starting with protecting the existing trees and natural spaces. In two thousand nineteen, San Diego removed more trees than it actually planted. We will not achieve our environmental climate action goals without environmentally sustainable policies. As an indigenous woman, land use is very near and dear to my heart. I have long been an advocate for a safer, more inclusive District Two. We need someone who is not just going to talk about it, but be about it when it comes to community issues. I can and I will represent the needs of my constituents while advocating for a more accountable, transparent and connected city hall. We need a fresh new perspective for D two. We deserve represents, a representative who listens and cares. Someone who is committed to the community and not sold out to corporate interest. I intend to bring the community back to City Hall with more transparency and leadership. I want to partner with the local community groups and community leaders to bring forth common sense solutions to the community with policy that works for everyone and progresses our city towards a brighter, more inclusive and equitable future. I'm not going to call you names or ignore you. I'm going to call you back. You can call me anytime at six one nine five three five nine four one one, or reach out to me via email. My website, I'll put that in the chat, but I would like to invite you to my next rally this Saturday at Amos Canyon, where it all started at eleven o'clock. I'd love to see you there.
Okay, I see Joel Day next, and then I see Daniel Schmikowski. Did I say that right? Everyone's betraying my last name, so feel free to connect me. But Jolly, you have two minutes and then I'll go to Dan.
Hi, everybody. Good to see so many friendly faces on here. My name is Joel Day. And I'm a candidate for City Council in District Two. I'm running to bring a new generation of leadership to work harder at City Hall for working families. My story, like so many San Diegans, starts with my granddad who got off his Navy ship after World War Two and was a farmer from the border to Bakersfield for about five years. My kids are the fourth generation of our family to live in District Two. And I'm running to ensure that they have a good, better quality of life. I'm a grad of Point Loma and U S D, and now I'm a faculty member at U C S D where I teach our students how to bring best practice global public policy home right here to San Diego, tailor it for us, but not have to reinvent the wheel on the crises that we face like housing and homelessness and climate adaptation. I've seen how the sausages made at City Hall. I've seen the dysfunction. I was a department director for five years. I oversaw the city's COVID response and public safety reforms. And now I've seen how we can do it better, and that's why I'm running. For me, it's not just about specific plans and policies, which you can read on my website, joeldaysd dot com, where we have comprehensive policies up. But for me, it's also personal. You know, I grew up in a home that was marked by debt and depression and divorce. And my dad went to prison when I was six years old for being one of the largest narcotics dealers in the U S. For me, it was my public library where I learned to read, where I was put on a path to be the first in my family to attend college. We can do that here in OB. We can do that by rebuilding our library to make sure that every single obesion has that same opportunity, that same access every working family deserves in San Diego. I'm going to fight for this community. I'm going to be your delegate at City Hall. Please join me at joeldaysd dot com. Thanks.
Thank you Joel. Daniel, you have the floor.
Well, thank you for the privilege to speak before you. I'm not asking for your vote for D two because I know I won't get your vote. I know that already. I'm not being negative. I'm being honest. We need campaign finance reform. We need to limit the candidates to twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars. And I'll tell you the truth. No one, and I'm an Iron Man. I've done Iron Man many times. No one. There's not one person in San Diego that can beat me dollar for dollar. I know that. That's a fact. I know that. Now, if you're going to vote for anybody, vote for the young lady Mandy. Vote for her. And send a message. Send a message to the Republican donors, to Jen Campbell and Sempra Energy. Do that for me. And one more thing. The Midway area is a blight. And when the homeless do not walk, want voluntarily, voluntarily, when they will not take medical help or housing or food or shelter or anything or education, we need to criminalize homelessness. If they don't want, if they're going to kick a gift horse in the mouth, then we need to get them off the street once and for all. And, and stop this crocodile tears. Crocodile tears are over with. Now it's time to take action. And one more thing. I know I have the judgment to be at the City Council, but the thing is, I'm in a no man's land because I vote with the Republicans half the time. I vote G O P half the time. Because you know what?
Daniel, your two minutes are up. If you could just wrap it up.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Send a message. I get three thousand votes, four thousand. That's a message. They're going to wake up. They're going to wake up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I, I don't see anyone else's hands in non-agenda public comment. Okay, we will move on to our first agenda item. So man, Tracy and I dug through the minutes. And I'm standing here now, you know, knowing what I know, I can say I was a fool last year saying I wanted to revote on sorry, the signature requirement, but we did put it up for a year-on-year basis. So I am putting it up to the board whether or not we require signatures for the election. We have extended, either way it goes tonight, we have extended the deadline for applications until next week. So we will not, we'll publicize the final ballot on all social media platforms and then have that out again for online voting. We're going to have an in-person drop box at the OB Business Center, and then you can also mail stuff into our P O box. Okay, so I, is there any discussion on whether or not we want to collect signatures? Or do I just have a motion of one way or the other, and we'll just vote?
Can we clarify?
Motion to not require signatures this year.
Alright. Can I hear Kevin's comments?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, we got to vote.
Can we clarify the quantities in the signature, the, the signature requirements that would apply? Because we, we changed those recently.
Uh, it was, yeah, it was ten for appointments and twenty-five for elections. More to get elected and less to be appointed.
Wait one sec. Let me pull it up online before we do that completely here. Okay. Our website's so low. Okay. So last year in twenty twenty-one, we had had, we were going to do twenty signatures, but it got crossed out because we weren't collecting signatures. And then for appointments, it would have been ten signatures.
Twenty was the bylaws change. And then that would be due upon filing the application next week.
Yes.
How many, am I getting appointed or running for the district?
I have to run for the state Newman.
Newman, you're running, unless you don't want to run, but you're, I thought you were running.
No.
I'm running. I'm running. I'll never not run.
Can I just?
My selfishness is, sorry, I wasn't sorry to interrupt. My selfishness is just, I'm going on a family trip at the end of the month. I'd rather not make any unneeded contacts with people or places that I don't have to until maybe I get back. So unfortunately, I'm just either limited signatures or no signatures this year, just because the pandemic is still going would be helpful in my situation, although I am open to discussion.
Thank you Newman. Nicole?
Yeah, I was just gonna piggyback sort of off what Newman said. I feel like it's still socially irresponsible to be asking board members to go out and interact with twenty people. We're still deeply in the COVID pandemic. I know more people now than, that have had it than I did ever before. So I, I feel a little concerned about that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments Nicole. Tracy?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, I agree with that. I'm, I'm fine going and talking to people personally. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. But I know that other people might still have concerns. So, and I also would like to just put it out there that last year, we didn't require the candidates to do it. And I think that it should be a full cycle. So last year's candidates for odds and this year's for evens, just to make it fair. But next year, you know, we should definitely address it and hopefully we won't be in this situation again. But that's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you Tracy. Chris?
Probably no surprise. I agree with Tracy and Nicole, and I would have the happiest second Newman's motion to forego the signature requirement this year. I'll put the disclaimer out there. I see the value in the signatures at normal times, but I strongly agree with Nicole. So I just don't think it's the responsible thing for us as a planning board to be requiring people out there knocking on doors or, you know, requesting signatures in person.
Great. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from Newman, second from Chris. Any further discussion about the signature requirement waiving it this year?
I have a question.
Yes, Richard.
So.
This also saves work for you because then you don't have to validate the signatures.
Thank you. Alright, so that's where, exactly where I was going. So the only app, application I've gotten so far was with Anthony. Alright, in my understanding, being the vice chairman or whatever of the, the committee is, all we have to do is verify that the candidates are legitimate candidates because we don't have signatures required. Is that correct?
That would be correct if this motion passes.
Okay, so at the end of next week, then the, the, the committee for election chairs should have all of the appointments or applications in hand. So we can verify. I, I know you moved in a year or two, in the last couple of years, whatever.
You did.
Verify their legitimate candidates. Is, is that doable?
That is, I, that's perfectly doable. We have until the March, March, March second, I think, again. I was. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if, so we're gonna, we're gonna get the, application should actually be in by next week. If you want to get listed on the ballot. If you want to be a write-in candidate, then it doesn't matter as long as you get your application in by the day of the election, you can be a write-in candidate. But if you want to be listed on the ballot, you have to get your application in by, I think it was the ninth, but I can't remember what I, yeah, I think it was the ninth.
So the actual election is the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, just so everybody understands that clearly, the election is the next month's board meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, and Richard, I did, I did send you my application. I took a picture of it and sent it to you. I don't know if you remember, but I like crossed out twenty twenty-one and wrote twenty.
Yes, I remember that. My apologies for leaving you out there.
I also have Virginia's and Nicole's, but I'll be sending along to you as well. Kevin?
Real quick, where's the hand raised feature on the computer app?
It's under reactions. It's under the little smiley face.
Okay, so I think the signature gathering process is probably one of the more, maybe the most important thing that some board members will do over the course of a year in terms of engaging with the community. And I think it's a shame. I, I, it's, it's difficult. I get it. And it's, you know, now it's very close to the deadline. I would like that if the deadline was extended to, you know, match up with the election day, so that somebody's election, you know, if they got the votes, obviously that would be contingent on them also having qualified signatures. Then they could kind of campaign and solicit votes and signatures at the same time. That would be, that's more of a bylaws thing. It would also give people a little more time to get those signatures. I, you know, the vast majority of people are out in public, dealing with people on a day-to-day basis. And the vast majority of people, even if they aren't, are getting knocked. And the vast majority of people, even if they aren't, are getting knocked at their door. If someone's that sensitive to it, they don't have to open the door. So I, I think it could absolutely be done in a safe manner that respects everyone's needs. So I, I would not support waiving it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion before I call a vote on the motion? Okay, wonderful. Tracy, call the roll.
Alright, this is to waive the signature requirement for twenty twenty-two election. Melanie?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane? I cannot hear you. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Can't. Thumbs up. Okay, Tom, thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up, okay. Kevin?
No.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard? Yes, thumbs up. George is not here. Andrea?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And Virginia? Hey, Virginia, thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, thank you. Thumbs up. Alright, motion passes. No signatures will be required this year and we're only gonna do it for this year, hopefully, and I will make sure to put. All of the information for voting online by tomorrow, so it will be on our website tomorrow, sometime tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, do we have our project applicant available and ready to present?
I see him there. See if he's.
Uh, Tracy, do we have screen share enabled?
I'm gonna be doing the screen sharing for him. Taylor, I believe, is presenting and hopefully he's at his computer. If not, maybe you could request him to unmute.
Oh wait, you said Terry.
Gary Taylor.
Gary, okay, sorry, I said Terry Taylor.
Kevin, you should be able to screen share. I made you a co-host.
Right, okay. There we go. Gary, if you wanna unmute yourself, you can go ahead and present your project.
Okay, am I on now?
You are on. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So you can see me then. I see my project. Hello, planning board. Let's see, Kevin's been helpful. Mostly, right Kevin?
Some people wouldn't agree with that.
Yeah, I'm the design consultant on the project. We're in for a CDP. The property owners, residents on the property are Mr. and Mrs. Hart. They may be listening in. They, they moved onto this property in nineteen ninety-three. They built. They had, they built a residence in the rear of the property. And at the time, they also had a house designed for the front of the property, which they did not do. So it's been vacant all these years. The front of the property, if you're familiar with it. Kevin could probably pull up a picture if you need to see one. So they now want to develop the front of the property and also provide a new residence that they. Will move into, but their immediate concern is an ADU. That their son is gonna move into, but so we have an ADU proposed in the middle of the property, a new residence proposed in the front of the property. The ADU is. Smaller, I think it's seven hundred and thirty-seven square feet, one story, and then the front house is a two-story. With roof deck. And we've met, we've met with the. Design committee and, oh, by the way, the city has approved. There's no more issues with the city. They've cleared. All of their items. The committee. Had me look at one item in particular on the. Front setback angled envelope criteria and I've made some adjustments to that. And I forwarded those to Kevin. And then Kevin also had a issue with. Attached ADU that was in our original scope of work. That was. Part of the two-story residence, part of that was designated a. Well, originally a junior unit, but ADU or companion unit. But we've now removed that and incorporate that into the house. Mainly because. We did have the parking. Originally, the city was trying to enforce a parking overlay or beach impact parking on me. And so I had to reduce the front residence to less bedrooms because of the parking requirement, but now. That they've agreed the parking overlay doesn't affect this property. We can now add bedrooms to the back into the house, so. No second ADU. New residence in the front. The schedule of the project is to build the middle ADU, the small one-story now. And the residents will follow maybe, I'm not sure when, but the immediate concern is do the ADU for. Their son and the front of the property win budget and the right time. But we want to get the entitlement for them, so we have that on the books for at least three years. So. Let's see, be glad to answer any other questions. As needed.
Yeah, what's, what's the total FAR for the property?
It's point seven five fifty, fifty-two hundred and thirty-three and we're right there at fifty-two twenty-four. So we're, it's almost matched out. The existing residence, garages, ADU and new residence, point seven five.
Great, Anthony?
Yes, could, could Kevin or who's controlling, could you show the, the site plan for the existing? See what's, what's there now. It was a little unclear, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a survey sheet, second sheet, Kevin.
Here we go, yeah. Okay, so there's.
Look to the left. Look to the left, you'll see the restructure at the rear.
Oh, is that the rear? I see. So you're gonna demo that?
No, that stays.
That's staying, okay.
We're, we're an RM, one, one zone allows two units. They have a real nice patio area there. You can see sort of in the middle to the left. Patio, I think they have a jacuzzi there and a gazebo. That'll stay and then we're gonna build the L-shaped LD or ADU. Right there, you can see it dashed in. And you see the large tree there that were between the two buildings.
Very true. Okay, and so the existing two-story house, what's the, what's the livable square footage of that guy?
That is, it's a two-bedroom, two-bath, it's twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve, okay.
And then garages below. There's, there's the original building plans there.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Andrew, you mind if I go over the, the project committee?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Are there any exterior, can I just ask one question? Are there any exterior renderings? Or do we have an idea of what materials are gonna be used and the look of the house?
Yeah, there's, don't have the, that's the ADU. That's the one-story ADU in the middle.
Okay.
We'll start with that. Was it wood, trim?
Yeah, so. Stucco with a comp shingles.
And then the front house.
Here's the front, not a rendering, but sort of some shaded elevations.
And then there's kind of a pop-out box on the side.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Kevin, please go over the PRC.
Yeah, so this, I actually came to the project committee twice. And both times the review was to basically go back, make some changes and come back. That was in large part due to some of the city issues that cleared that. We thought should not have been cleared. You know, as you mentioned, having two ADUs on, on site. And also the front of the building encroaching into the view corridor. And. The applicant has been responsive to that. The. I think I, you know, it's maybe debatable on the front. The changes to the front, being completely compliant, but he did, he moved back basically the front balcony at the roof level. To fit that, we call it an angled building envelope that sort of keeps things from crowding into that view corridor. And also pushed back. A second floor overhang that was hanging out into the view corridor. And then the ADU, the second ADU became another bedroom in the house. So I would say it's largely compliant in that sense. The, the PRC motion. Let's see, verbatim was to recommend the applicant get a second look from the city on the front back, front setback, view corridor. Angled building envelope and ability to provide two ADUs before coming back to the board. And then, so that was the PR, the latest PRC motion.
Hey Kevin, can, can either you, Mr. Taylor, provide some clarity on the parking? Two, well, with, with two, two units to three, what is the onsite parking going to be? Off-street parking going to be at completion of construction? How many stalls?
Four, four garages at the alley right now. And of course, there's, that's all the parking that we could get on the site because of the building that blocks the access. And of course, you're not allowed curb cuts in the front, so there's four spaces. Two are required for the two-bedroom in the existing and the new building or the new residence. Two-point-two-five spaces are required and that rounds down to two, so two plus two, four unit, four spaces.
Great, thank you.
One other thing that came up.
Can I just get to the couple of people who raised their hand, Kevin?
Oh yeah, go for it.
Yeah, okay, Chris, I see you with your hand up.
Thanks, Kevin or, or Mr. Taylor, do we have an updated sort of. Visual of where that, that encroachment to the front setback was and what we've done to reduce it, maybe like a dotted line through the original proposed. Plan, just kinda curi- curious to hear. What actually was accomplished to avoid that?
Well, let's see if we, I don't think Kevin, Kevin could pull up the previous one. I wish I could, but. It clearly, I've shown it real, you know, I really, Kevin gave me really good direction on this and I reread the ordinance and. I'm trying to show it very clearly, nineteen foot at the front, angles up forty-five degrees, so. On the west elevation and the east elevation shows that angle setback with one projection that we're allowed. So. Previously, it was.
Yep, yep, and that's exactly what I was looking for, the building envelope. I remember a good amount of discussion about that at the. Project review committee. So Kevin, when you said it pretty much meets, meets, meets the requirements for the, the front setback and that building envelope. Are you referring to the, the encroachment that, that Mr. Taylor just referenced? Or is there something else that's outstanding still in your mind for the, the building angle envelope?
I mean. It's, it's sort of, it's sort of a gray area, I guess, or for example, like the second floor patio. And railing, so the, sorry, the second floor room and the railing to the left of it. That's all at a fifteen-foot setback and the, the code does say you have to have half of it. And a twenty-foot setback to kind of push it away from the street more, but.
Well, the building walls back at twenty.
Yeah, the city, I mean, the city, I don't know if they would, you know, they, they'd call the railing probably an extension of the floor underneath it. I, I don't know. It's, I, I think that's more of a gray area. I. I think technically it doesn't comply in that sense, but. That's, that's something where, you know, maybe smart minds would disagree, but as far as the actual, you know, the, the more. I guess blatant encroachments. The east elevation here shows the second floor that was sticking out before that's been pushed back. Level has been pushed back, so.
Okay. That's helpful, no, appreciate it.
How many buildings are on this lot?
Existing one. One two-story at the rear.
And then one building on the front?
It's proposed and, and then the ADU in the middle.
So there were three buildings?
There will be three. One existing and two proposed.
If you guys have walked on Pescadero, you've probably walked past this lot. It's the whole front is a garden area without any development on it. Very distinctive from the, the ones around it.
Tracy, see your hand up. Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is actually to Kevin. I'm a little confused by the motion because it's saying that you want the applicant to look. Or to get a second look from the city before coming back to the board. Has that before already happened and he has already got the second look and now he's coming to us saying he's got the second look?
No, basically what we have is the applicant has modified, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary. But you've modified the drawings and I know that you were. I, I don't know that you had gotten approval from the owners to resubmit those. But to answer Tracy's question, they have not been yet resubmitted or reviewed by the city.
So then.
See, the project, the project was approved. There was no, but we've got a situation where the city says everything is fine. Now Kevin has pointed out something they may have missed and I agreed with that. So we're really, the city's reviewing maybe a mistake they made, but that, but I'm sure they would agree a hundred percent. And then the AD, second ADU. Was an issue with the committee, though it's allowed by the city with the coastal development permit. So it worked, the fact we have one less ADU, the city won't have a problem with that. So I mean, if I've taken back to the city, that's another cycle, which I. I would hate to do. That'll be another two months and then back to see you folks another month, it's another three months, so.
Okay, so are, are we approving plans before this, the city has like looked at everything? Or I mean, are we, are we, I, I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Kevin kind of talk about that. Cause I'm not sure like if we need to look at another set of plans and put him through another couple of months and more cost. Or whatever, but so that's, that's one of my questions. And then the other question is, is I couldn't really see where trees are. I must have missed that slide. Can you give me kind of an idea of what the landscaping is gonna look like?
There we go. Let's see, we have, yeah, we have landscape plan. This is have just three large palms in the front, street, streets trees, very distinctive. One of them isn't as healthy, probably will have to, we show it to be replaced. But we have a landscape plan professionally prepared. You might be able to read those better than I can if you want to know the type or what's proposed, but usually on a concept, you, you indicate several different choices. And then when you do the final drawings, you select the one that, that best fits it. So it's kind of a palette there, I believe.
Okay, alright, so we're not, we're not really removing any trees and never putting them back or anything like that. Okay.
On the site, we have to deal with, we indicate what would be removed. But looks like we're replacing one of the street trees because it was, it was. Dying or was diseased, the landscape architect pointed that out, so.
Okay.
That'll get replaced.
You, you probably know how, how we are about our trees here in OB, so just wanna make sure. Okay, and honestly, I mean, I normally I like to see renderings of the project, you know, color renderings and stuff like that. But I actually even, you know, with your drawings, I can kind of get an idea that this project is, is interesting. It's not just a boring old box. So I'm, I'm kind of impressed by the fact that I, after a couple of years, I can see the possibilities just in the drawing. So, but it looks good. I, I like it. Interesting.
Thank you. Regarding the, the set, the set that I have now that I revised based on the committee's recommendations. My thought was to. Inform our project manager that we tweaked it for the positive and give him the scope and ask him whether he wants. And he'll have the new sheets, so if he wants me. Uh, no, he'll have the new sheets, so if he wants me to take it to the planner again. Or the transportation guy, I will, but I'd rather not have you require me to then come back after everyone's approved. What you recommended, because they've already approved it, you've just tweaking it a little bit for us. Does that make sense?
So Tracy asked me a question about the process on this. So the, you know, as you know, there's like five, six different divisions at the city that review. There's a guy that reviews the parking, there's a guy that reviews the, the trees, there's a guy that reviews the building. Most of those have checked all their comments off, there's, there's some that have not. There's, I mean, one of them has the planning board made a recommendation.
Yeah, there's only one unchecked and that is.
Okay.
Your guy, the community group and then environmental can't check all theirs off till they hear that everyone signed.
Yeah, so, so. Getting it is that it's basically waiting on us. Per the previous submitted that had these encroachments on it. And. It sounds like he wants us to vote on this revision four that hasn't yet been submitted. And.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's not a review, I mean. The city is going to say, why are you changing it, we approved it. But I'm going to explain that to them, but.
You, you, you can do that regardless, they may trigger another cycle, it doesn't necessarily have to trigger. A, another review from us though, to answer that question. You know, we could vote and say we support this and then you could throw these things away and not resubmit it, so that's another thing that, that's.
Oh no, I, no, I, I fully intend to.
Have been, have been concerned about on, you know, on previous projects.
Oh, no, this one, I've already, you, you're looking at what I revised my originals to match and I, I wouldn't.
So.
I wouldn't try and go around this, this is fine, the owners are happy with it, I like it. It's not going to, it's, this is what we'll go with.
So given, so given that, the board can make a, a sort of contingent recommendation. That, that's what I would recommend in this scenario. Because it hasn't been submitted yet.
I'm not sure if that's true, has it been submitted?
I mean, we, we make recommendations with conditions all the time, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to throw it, you know, sitting on the project review committee with, with Kevin, that vice chair role, I guess. We did discuss this and Tracy brought up a, a point that there was a little bit of discussion about in terms of what are we recommending to this applicant? And what options are available to them and, and so our recommendation was what we see in front of us today to, to have this applicant go back to the city. And double check some of these things and so that was, that was the action of the subcommittee and then as I understood it. Upon breaking from our subcommittee vote, it was really at the discretion of the chair. Whether or not we wanted to see this item today. And I understand we're, we're really trying not to impede the progress of applicants who otherwise do their homework and are trying to meet. The requirements that, that we want to see through the community plan, et cetera, et cetera, but I think it's a fair ask, I mean, I, I, I. I'm challenged to vote yes on this because we don't have the full information in front of us, I understand the history and the fact that it's basically our subcommittee. That provided the requested revisions and this applicant has been honest enough to say. We're going to take a look at those, we'll incorporate them and send it back to the city for them to approve. But it is a challenge because if our, if someone makes a motion here that we should approve this project and we're now looking at the final, final. I think that's problematic, so just some additional context from what the subcommittee discussion was on the motion and the options to see this tonight.
That's actually what I was getting at, Chris, thank you very much.
Well, this is the final set you're looking at right now, this is the final.
I'd like to propose a motion. I propose that we recommend approval of the project. On the condition that the. Applicants submits. The February first drawing set. Drawing revisions to the city.
Okay, sure, that's what I fully intend to do.
I can second that motion for you, Kevin.
Yeah, Anthony, okay, any discussion on the motion?
Is there any way we're going to ensure that that happens? Are we going to ask for writing proof that it was submitted, what do we, what do we think in that regard?
Well, I can send you any correspondence that I'm going to send to the project, project manager immediately, I will let you on it.
If he doesn't, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to the plan checkers and bitch, how's that sound? Make him revise it.
Okay, alright, yeah, as long as it's.
Same result.
Can I just?
As long as it's documented, I think that's good, so, alright.
Can I just like say how disappointed I am that we're that jaded? That we feel like people lie to us all the time and that we can't trust our applicants. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, Gary is untrustworthy, but this is like a, a constant battle that we have with people. That, you know, we, we are, we're, we're constantly second guessing people and going, well, you say what that, you know. And I don't know, anyways, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to go on record and say I'm very disappointed that we can't trust people. And we'll just leave that there.
And I have a comment relating to Tracy's comment, which is unfortunately. We've been lied to many times in the past. So. We do have to be somewhat suspicious and vigilant, sad, but true.
Well, everything you've asked for is, is reasonable and doable when things are. If, if something, someone suggests works and the owner likes it and I can make it work, I'm fine with it and that's what you've done, you, you. You haven't hurt the project and it's not, not that we have to sneak around at all, in this case, and the owners are aware. And I believe they're listening right now.
Yeah, honestly.
So I, I guess we'll go right down to the city.
By not building another ADU.
Yeah, I'm going to submit, I have to submit again to the city because I do have. I will do a response letter, in fact, I've been working on it while I, when your meeting started. A letter will, I will explain this because I have to give him your vote and I have to respond to the vote, so, and, and. So this will be the plans that'll go back in, they'll have guaranteed.
Yeah, and I will, when I submit the vote as well, I'll attach these specific plans. Kevin, just make sure they're clearly labeled in the drive, like attach these plans to my form submission. And send that off to say these are the plans, you know, whatever way the motion goes, these are the plans we looked at. This is, these are the plans our motion is pertaining to.
Okay.
Does that sound good with everyone? Because we do have a second on the floor, so I do have to ask Tracy to call for roll. Is there any last comment, questions, concerns? Any community input, do we have any neighbors today? Never be afraid to speak up, okay, great, so yeah, Tracy, call the roll, thank you.
Alright, Melanie. Does anybody see her? I can't see anything. Kevin, can you, can you stop sharing? Thank you very much, Melanie. Where? Thumbs up, okay. Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
I vote yes, Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Andrea?
Uh, yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And Virginia?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, Gary, I guess we'll both be submitting our, our vote recap tomorrow, so.
Okay, thank you, what was the vote?
It, um, it was unanimous approval, so. There's.
Twenty, twenty in favor, twenty in favor?
There's just, I think fourteen of us total.
Is that how many voted?
Hey Gary, Gary, it's thirteen, thirteen, yes, and one absent, there's one absent right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I do have a, a couple of things for next meeting, next month's meeting. And just things I want y'all to be aware of and look at, so first and foremost, the regional parks fund released their budget memo today. And they will be requesting money for both the Santa Cruz stair repair and the saltwater pool repair. So hopefully, yeah, more stair access, there, and I know it's not in another district, but they also requested about a million dollars. To repair all the drainage at Sunset Cliffs Natural Park, which I know we said would be a problem, but so they're finally getting around to it. So that's in there, which I know, again, isn't in our planning board, but I'm there almost every day, so I know some of you probably are too. Another thing I will probably put on the agenda next month because city council will start addressing it is called Build Better SD. Let me just make sure, do, 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 build better SD, so, um, oh no, that's the economic government. Which will also get to, so if you guys could all just take a look at this, it is, you know, the new. Kind of plan. Land use plan, which is what we do here. Getting it into the chat, there we go, so again, I will probably have that on the agenda next month, if you guys could all just take a look at that. The envi- and then a, a couple of months ago, I gave everyone the environmental justice survey about how the city will be implementing that. The survey results are out, so let me. You are interested in how they, the city will be implementing their environmental justice plan or. Kind of moving forward with that whole process and what the results of that survey, that is also in the chat. The last thing I'm going to put in the chat is the agenda for the meeting on the ninth for economic, the economic development. Committee, oh no, this is the one, do, 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 so, you know, that's again, when the street vending ordinance will be held. So if you can't make it there, please do at least submit your comments online, we want to make sure that the beaches voices are heard. And I, you know, the vendors are going to turn out, so we have to make sure that we turn out equally, if not more. So it's, so you know, we can make sure that distance restrictions and size restrictions on the vendors are enforced. And part of the ordinance and those don't get completely taken away. And that is all I have for the chairs report. And elections next month, so again, we will be, we have online voting, mail-in voting and we will have a Dropbox. And Richard, I think, so I did lose the key to our PO box, I'll be taking no questions about it at this time. But I will let the guys know at the office center that you will be coming in. And asking for our box, I'll give them your name and be like, I approve him to pick up our mail this one time. So on the day of the election, you'll be able to swing by and pick up. The Dropbox and all of the ballots that are there.
Alright, what day am I picking those up at?
So actually, I think we should wait until the day after the election, like the morning of, you should go and pick up all the ballots. Just so people have enough time to drop it off, because I think the business center closes before our meeting starts. And we are supposed to have voting like open throughout the meeting.
So pick up the ballots before the meeting, the next month's meeting?
Yes.
That's right around the corner from me, they're in my district, so.
Pick them up, yeah, pick them up the day after next month's meeting, if you please.
Day after next month's meeting?
Day after to give everyone the full day to vote.
Roger that.
So, so are you saying that we won't have the full accurate count until the day after the meeting?
Yeah. Is that okay with everyone? Because I, again, I just want everyone to have enough time to vote for the full day, I think.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, we typically, we typically have the results at the end of our meeting, so. Yeah, I'm totally fine with that, I don't care.
Yeah.
Just want to make it clear, that's all, okay?
Yeah, yeah, because Richard needs time to like pick, A, pick them up and then B, you know. Make sure they're not, no one's dead voting, I know there's a lot of that going around, you know. That is the end of the chairs report, do I have any other liaisons? I know Craig will have a treasures report if he's still on, Craig?
The current bank balance is one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Woo-hoo, okay, fantastic, I, anything else? I know Anthony, you had a big moment this week on the news of airport noise advisory and then I see your hand, Mandy, I'll get to you. No, nothing to report from that?
No, no, we didn't have a meeting, so nothing to report for, from the airport.
I do think Anthony's term will be up, I think you're only allowed to serve two times, so if anyone is interested in joining the airport noise advisory committee. We are going to have to replace Anthony in this next upcoming year. Perfect, and then also Tracy will be stepping down as secretary, if, if this is okay for me to announce, because I just want people thinking about it. And so if you are interested at all in being the secretary, we will be accepting applications, so.
Yeah, don't totally freak out because I, I just, I can't, I can't keep up with minutes and everything while I'm going to school full-time, so. But I will be available to continue to help with the website and social media and getting the Zoom meetings. And all that other stuff going on, so I'm just going to drop the secretary role, doing minutes, taking notes, that kind of stuff. But I will still be available to assist anyone who wants to do it, so thank you.
And thank you for your years and years of service, the minutes have been very thorough.
Someone takes over the project committee.
Alright, Chris, I see your hand up and then Mandy, I'll get back to you once I'm through all our board members.
I nominate Kevin as secretary and project review committee chair. And vice chair of this board and event committee chair. I was just going to, a quick announcement just from the arts land and airport combination, so we have an RFQ on the street right now for. Art handlers, art installers and art fabricators, you do need a general contractor's license or if you're not in possession of one of those. You're able to apply in tandem with somebody who does have a general contractor's license, but a lot of money. Toward the projects, these are all public art projects for the next five, ten years at the airport and this is a separation from the artist contracts. Is it just for installers and fabricators, so if you know anyone in those fields, have them go to the airport's website. Arts, I'm sorry, sand.org/business and a dead, deadline to apply is February twenty-third, so tell your friends.
Thank you, Chris, Tracy, did that remind you about arts?
Yeah, it reminded me about arts. Okay, so I just want to let everyone know that the commission for arts and culture would like to remind everyone. That our meetings are open to the public and if you would like to participate in the decision-making process regarding public art funding and equity. We would love to have your participation, I'm going to put the link to the. Commission website in the chat and then you can go to the meetings tab and find out when the meetings actually happen. They are still all currently virtual, so you don't have to go down to the city downtown to, to see these meetings. But I'm really trying to encourage people to participate in this process because, you know, it's kind of nice to see where your tax paying. Or your TOT money is going. But if anybody has any questions about art or the commission, let me know, thanks.
Thank you, okay, now Mandy, floor is yours, what's the news from Peninsula, our friends on the hill?
Alright, hi, good evening, our next PCPB meeting will be on Thursday, February seventeenth at six PM. And as well as your board, we will be hosting our annual election, we have five seats available this year for consideration. So if you know of anyone who lives in the Point Loma, the, the PCP boundary that wants to get involved. Have them go to the website at PCPB.net to find out more information. After our next, after the February meeting, most likely you'll see more information posted. I am a member of the election subcommittee and we have to get our final vote plan approved by the, the main board. At our next meeting, so you'll be sure to see more information after that meeting on our website. And that's all I have, thank you everyone.
Great, thank you, any last thoughts, comments, concerns, anything we want to take up next month or in the future? Any last thoughts, comments, concerns, anything we want to take up next month or in the future months? Okay, I would say, I know I've been spoiling y'all, making these meetings so nice and timely, but we might have a long one next month, just a heads up. Yeah, I think there's a couple of projects in the queue and then if we tackle the build back better and there might just be some other stuff, like if the street vending ordinance gets a lot of changes and through committee, then we're probably going to want to comment on that. So, just a few things coming, so I hope you enjoyed it while it lasted. But yeah, enjoy the sunshine and the sunsets, everyone, have a great weekend, even though it's Wednesday. Just start your weekend tomorrow, you have my permission, right?